I'd like to bring to order the City of Riverbank Planning Commission General Meeting, Tuesday, March 17th, 2015. Call to order.
Chair Hughes.
Here.
Vice Chair Dagley.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
And Commissioner McKinnon.
Here.
And let the record show that Commissioner Ville Dubois is excused.
On to conflict of interest. Any Planning Commission Authority member and staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered are to declare their conflict. Is there any conflict? Seeing none, moving forward to public comments. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please address the entire Planning Commission Board. Item two, consent calendar.
Let's stay with public comments, because I know, Madam Chairperson, that the mayor, who just showed up, because he's got a number of other commitments, and he's going to visit with us shortly tonight to talk about a couple items that he thinks is very important for us to know. Under public comments is what he asked to be able to make a presentation under.
It wasn't going to be an agendaized item, so it didn't have to be taken a lot more time. Thank you. I'm Richard O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor O'Brien.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Tonight, I want to address a couple of items to bring everything into perspective of where we're going in this city. First off, I want to start with the wastewater treatment plant. You may or may not know that we have a three-phase program in trying to capture every drop of water that we pump from the ground, and that's pumped back into the wastewater treatment plant, including eventually stormwater, capturing all the stormwater and pumping that either back into the aquifer or to some other use, agricultural or commercial use. Phase one is almost complete. Phase one has reduced, or will reduce, at least 70 percent of our electrical requirements. If you've been out to the wastewater treatment plant, you see these huge aerators picking water up, aerating the water, and it goes back down on the surface. That now is being done by low-pressure air underneath the water, and it bubbles up, aerating the water to make it more efficient. Those aerators are now going to be sold to other cities that require them, and so everything that we have will be used. The goal is to make the City of Riverbank a completely zero-use water. Everything that you have goes back into the ground. Your landscaping water that will percolate down to the aquifer, any runoff, captured as stormwater, and pumped back over for treatment and for disposition. So Phase two and Phase three are going to be expensive, and we've partnered with Snyder Electric, who are looking for OPM, other people's money. And that is using, what was it, Proposition One that was just recently passed. And that didn't pass by much, but that did pass. There's a lot of money that will be out there for express purpose that Riverbank's doing. But they want us to be regional. We have been in talks with Escalante, and they are on board with pumping their wastewater to us for treatment and for disposition. Informal talks with the City of Oakdale have made them favorable to the idea. Maybe they already will have their first treatment done, so theirs would be at a lower expense to us, or lower cost to them, to have it taken care of. So we could capture approximately 3 billion gallons of water a year, and putting it either back into the aquifer, or if, make a deal with the county, they can buy it from us and pump it to Woodward Reservoir. Again, that's going to take a lot of money, but that money is available through Proposition One. So as you go for development, as you're going for, well, how are we going to take care of this? Our goal is that any new improvements, any new commercial or any new residential developments will be a zero sum in water use. There's a lot of issues out there right now. Agland preservation is the number-one issue for certain people. I say it's water. Agland preservation, one-to-one mitigation is out there, and we'll have to comply with that guideline. But as we move forward, I think that you can rest assured that we're doing all we can do to make this a eco-friendly system. Secondly, we have some developments that we're doing. And some of it's going to be based upon the North County Corridor, as you see in the charts right here. If the North County Corridor swings north, as most prevalent, you can point, I can't.
Okay, I will.
Okay, yeah. The North County Corridor is progressing up over Eleanor, which is
This is Eleanor here.
Right there. Okay? If that happens, and we incorporate that land, that will now become an urban interchange. What that will do is open up the east side of Riverbank to the development, it's being developed now, but into a higher-quality development, because your traffic circulation is going to greatly improve. It's going to go greatly improved, the east-west, so you can get onto the, and then north-south along Eleanor, onto the North County Corridor. So that will open up the east side of Riverbank, as well as, you know, as we're doing on the west side, because the circulation is much better. So the North County Corridor, final decisions should be made in 2016 in the route, and then there in 2016 to 2018, they'll start property settlements, or buying out the properties. So that in itself is a major feat. As you can see, it takes away some of the industrial park area. I was concerned with that. I am not any longer. As long as we can have an urban interchange, we can do great things in that area. We've talked to Ken Beard. He is the president, CEO of Northern, no, Sierra, Northern Sierra Railroad, Sierra Northern Railroad, that's it. And with that, he is, he did Beard Development, the industrial park and commercial parks in Modesto, and he was in charge of MMET, or the Modesto
Empire Transit.
Empire Transit. And he will help us develop not only the industrial park that we currently have, but the properties behind the industrial park, or to the east of the industrial park, which are already zoned industrial. And he has contacts. So that can open up to our area of bringing jobs to our city, or not bringing jobs to our city, making it conducive to bring jobs to our city. The other area which I'm addressing tonight is your planning documents. You've been doing a great job in working on the planning documents, the downtown-specific plan. There is some opposition, but downtown-specific plan has some great features to it, as well as the growth of the Ganji Plant, back into, assuming that, back into residential links and commercial. The Nexus Fee Study, I commend you on that. That was a difficult task. That's out now for public comment. That'll come back, and it'll go eventually to the council. I'm not making any recommendations, nor do I know everything in the Nexus Fee until just before the council meeting, so I can make a clear choice, but I'm not predetermined how I'm going to vote. Then we have the west side that is opening up, also with the North County Corridor. Can you move that? A little bit more. There you go. See the North County Corridor making its southerly dip, right at the canal, crossing Clarabelle and the lateral. The southerly dip kind of excluded us, but I think it's a good deal for the City of Riverbank. Will have less congestion on Oakdale Road as people are going in and out of the shopping center. There's also plans on the west side of Oakdale Road, just across from the shopping center, this area that's framed by the lateral to Clarabelle, there you go, the lateral to Clarabelle, will be another commercial, duplicating, not duplicating, mirroring what we have at the crossroad shopping center. Okay? That's in the works now, and I'm sure you all heard about that. In addition, there will be some housing development, schools that are greatly needed. The schools in the crossroads are already over capacity, and so those schools will alleviate the pressure there and reduce the amount of classroom, kids-per-classroom ratios. There's also going to be a fire station to service this side of the town, as well as possibly a middle school. All of that is now in the works, as they develop their specific plan. As that plan is developed, they're paying for all of their planning documents, all of their fees upfront, as they move forward. Our next hurdle will be coming on up with a strategy for incorporating lands outside the city limits into the city limits. My intention is to block Riverbank off. If you take, do you have the current map, or the general plan map? Current map? If you take a look at the current map, there are a lot of areas that are not part of the city, that are right in the middle of the city. If you take a look at areas to the, right, just draw a line down Eleanor. Eleanor's right there. So you have property in the city limits that borders Eleanor, then none that, right next to it, it dips down to Claus Road, comes back up, encompasses the industrial complex. So if we block it off, it makes it easier to control all of your movement in the future. So, and all of this is going to take place not in the next 10 years. The incorporation may happen in the next couple of years, but any movement for development or anything isn't going to happen for about 10 years or more. But we have to start planning for it. And you guys are doing a great job, Madam Chair and Commissioner, you guys are doing a great job in supporting this type of movement towards a more complete Riverbank. The developments that we have in the future will be generating tax revenues to up, bring up the entire, all portions of Riverbank. I know I had two other topics, but I think I've probably exceeded my five minutes. Is there any questions you have for me? I know this isn't normally a communication one, but
I'm sure I would have some questions for you. Perhaps you can come back.
Oh, absolutely.
Visit us as we move forward, and we can have some discussions further, maybe even some workshops relegated to this information.
I think, I think really, maybe that's something that we can talk about during our strategic session that's going to be happening on March 31st. There's a couple different planning efforts, I think, that the City Council is going to give direction to staff on, and then it might be appropriate to have a joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting or workshop to talk about it.
Okay.
Just so you're more in the loop with what council has in mind.
Okay.
Okay? That would be very much acceptable. All right? Thank you for your time. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for stopping by.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to move over to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commissioner member for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Item two, point A, posting of the agenda. Item two, point B, approval of the agenda. Item two, point C, approval of the minutes.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Chair Hughes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Dagley.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner McKinnon.
Yes.
Before we open the public hearing, I'd like to hear from staff, please.
You just approved the consent calendar, so you're moving on to your next item. So you want to read it first, 3.1?
Okay.
Okay.
The Riverbank Downtown Pacific Plan, project description. Item 3.1.
You can go ahead and read, you want to read just the first part of it?
Yes.
And then we'll go from there?
To guide development in the historic downtown Riverbank and the reuse of the Cannery District, a specific plan has been prepared, along with accompanying general plan amendment and municipal ordinance amendment. The intent of the downtown specific plan is to create a vibrant downtown area with up to an additional 53 single-family dwelling units, 832 multifamily dwelling units, 152,859 square feet of recreational sports complex uses, 282,579 square feet of retail commercial service uses, and 89,558 square feet of office uses within this planning area. The area consists of all parcels located between Calendar Avenue, Fourth Street, Atchison Street, and Patterson Road, and includes all parcels having frontage along Atchison Street west of Seventh Street, including the area known as the Cannery District. The redevelopment of the Cannery District is a parallel goal of the downtown specific plan to increase downtown's overall vibrancy through a public-private relationship.
Good. I'll go ahead and give the staff report, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, John Anderson, Contract Community Development Director. This is an item, obviously, that we've, as a commission here, have spent quite a bit of time on. The city's obviously spent a lot of time, effort, energy over the last several years in putting together an acceptable plan that addresses most, maybe not all of the concerns, but most of the concerns that have been expressed by the existing community, including those individuals that are directly affected by it, including the Sun Garden Ganji folks. So there's many elements to tonight's discussion, and I'll go through a PowerPoint, and then I'll kind of break the actions down that are expected of this commission as recommendations to the City Council. So the outline is that we've got, you know, plan objectives, plan boundaries, which, again, we've talked about a number of times. We'll talk about district zones, district zone regulations, implementation, then it's certainly expected that there'll be future modifications to this plan, like any other plan. So that's definitely a part of this specific plan effort and the rewrite. So we've had recent community involvement, there's been a lot of community involvement leading up to the draft plans that this commission and the City Council have seen over the last four or five years. Recently, we had a workshop with the commission on July 15th, the 14th, again, August 19th, and again, September 16th, which culminated in the releasing of a final document in January of this year that could be made available for anybody to review and provide comments on. And then what we've done, what staff has done from there, is we've developed an errata sheet, which is part of your agenda package, it's actually shown as page 130, which provides cumulative summary of changes to this document that staff is suggesting since the January 2015 release of what we're calling the final specific plan for the downtown specific plan area. The guiding principles, again, talked about small-town character, giving us some kind of community identity, and then talking about choice and diversity. And really, with this plan, we're talking about the properties that are along the highway, or State Route 108, and then also in the downtown core area, and then trying to come up with plausible linkage between the Cannery District and the investment that's been made in the downtown core area by the former redevelopment agency. Their guiding principles are improved quality of life, not only for new businesses, new residents, but also for the existing residential neighborhoods that we have now. And then also talking about land use, and to encourage mixed use of commercial and residential uses in and around the downtown core. So obviously, within the setting, you've got an investment that's been made in the downtown core area. We have existing businesses that, as assets, there was an opportunity at one time to convert the Del Rio, as part of an RDA effort, into something else. Obviously, the Del Rio is owned by the State of California now, and we're told that it's in escrow, and it's conceivable that we could be seeing a site development plan involving that property fairly shortly. So from that standpoint, it's important for us to have the downtown specific plan adopted as implementing strategy to deal with properties like the Del Rio in the future. It's not unlike, you know, dealing with the Sun Garden Ganji property, the former Contadina Plant, and future land uses that may be brought forward within that area as well. And then, of course, we got, you know, the properties along SR 108, and try to preserve existing businesses we have, but then also dealing with, you know, some underutilized properties along those corridors, and coming up with very specific design characteristics, which is what this specific plan is intended to do. Plan boundaries. We've talked about this, there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, what is the appropriate boundaries? The original boundaries included, you know, primarily, in my opinion, you know, too much of the existing downtown residential core area that, quite frankly, won't change. So in July, this commission, or in August, rather, August of 2014, 2014, this commission directed staff to reduce the boundaries to the boundaries that you see today. It does include existing residential neighborhoods that, quite frankly, may never change, but unfortunately, because of their proximity between the Sun Garden Ganji properties and the downtown core area, you know, they're, they need to be part of the plan. It's difficult to cut them out of the plan. So the boundary is what it is, and that's what's been presented to you, and ultimately be presented to the City Council for approval. The districts. Now, this is a bit different. The way that this is set up and structured, the zoning of the property within the downtown specific area will be SB3. SB1 is crossroads, SB2 is the LRA property or the Riverbank Industrial Complex. This would be the third specific plan, so it's SB3, downtown specific plan. The land uses, excuse me, the land use regulations that will govern the properties in this district boundary will be the downtown specific plan. The districts that correspond are indicated within this diagram, and then we have, I'll go back to this in a minute, then we have descriptions of what these district zones mean, and then we have, you know, a table that talks about a couple different things, the types of land use categories that you might allow, and things like setbacks, and then, of course, minimum side areas, lot coverage, and all the types of things that you would normally see within traditional zoning, contained within the district zone regulations of the downtown specific plan. So this is, this is the tool, the bottom line is, this is the tool that we'll be using to evaluate, you know, expansions and/or new projects that are wanting to be brought forward within the downtown specific plan. So it's very similar to what we did with crossroads, and very similar to what we will do with Riverbank Industrial Complex. So going back, in order to, in order to be consistent with the goals and principles of the downtown specific plan, there was a number of general plan land use designations that are part of the 2009 general plan that need to be modified, and that's what this map indicates. There's a number of properties that are designated on the existing general plan, as an example, as high-density residential. Most of those sites are currently zoned R2. Those sites are intended to be of residential nature in the future, so what we're suggesting is that the designations on those sites be changed to medium-density residential, as an example. Now, there's other examples, changing some sites to mixed use, and then also changing some sites to low-density residential. So in order, in order for us to make a general plan consistency statement, you know, we need, we are suggesting that these general plan land use changes have to occur before the specific plan is acted upon, and they would, in essence, support the downtown specific plan and the policies and implementation strategies of that plan. So talked about downtown districts, talked about the district zone regulations, all of which are within the document that we've had a chance to take a look at. And then, obviously, you know, there's plan implementation, you know, as part of the general plan, is the zoning, talked about that, and it talks about the standard specifications, which, again, are in the specific plan itself. The specific plan document had an accompanying environmental impact report. This environmental impact report has received a lot of scrutiny, ultimately is adopted by the City Council on March 25th, 2013. Its findings, in fact, are, again, referenced in this staff report, and they'll be referenced in the staff report to the City Council, because it is the SEQA-supporting document that supports the action to enact the downtown specific plan. You know, we were required, it is a project as defined, we're a project, we're required to do SEQA, and it's this 2003 SEQA document that supports the downtown specific plan that we're presenting to you tonight. There are subsequent approvals we think are going to happen. We've heard that Sun Garden Ganji, as an example, would like to do a development agreement in the future. Great. We haven't seen that, we don't have a current application, but we think that's going to happen. We know that there are other project entitlements, mapping, and others that are going to be moving forward. Once this specific plan is adopted, those projects will be reviewed and evaluated according to the downtown specific plan that the city ultimately acts on. And this just follows, follows through with that. Atchison Street, you know, this is, you know, obviously, right now, it's SR 108. There's been some preliminary design concepts put together as part of this planning effort. This is, in a perfect world, we'd like to see something like this. Quite frankly, you know, it's going to take money and time. You know, you don't go out and put in all this money in landscaping and whatnot in Caltrans right-of-way without, you know, substantial investment in public and private dollars. So, you know, this is a concept, and that's certainly what we're doing here. And it's, and in actuality, if and when the North County Corridor comes, does come into fruition, the SR 108 would be converted over to city ownership, maintenance purposes, et cetera. This project may become easier then. But meanwhile, we've got, you know, a design strategy set up for Atchison Street to help promote the downtown specific plan, area and downtown Riverbank, which is the whole purpose behind this effort. Obviously, you know, Atchison's got, you know, you know, primarily created four vehicles, not necessarily a quote-unquote "complete" street, so what we're talking about in concept is more complete in that it has soft landscape features, as well as continuous sidewalks that's available both on the north and the south side. Another one of the areas is a typical residential street. There's been a lot of discussion relative to our street standards, which we're going to be presenting to council in the next couple of weeks, and what is appropriate. You're hearing the buzzword "complete streets" from a lot of different agencies. What that really means is that the streets that we're designing are not just for vehicles. They're for vehicles, they're for pedestrians, they're for folks on bicycles, they're for folks that are on scooters, as a matter of fact. What we're suggesting here is that typical residential street, which by the way, is the same type of residential street standard we want to use as a city standard, would contain many components. Parking, of course, sidewalk, of course, and then a narrower traffic lane on street, on, on streets rather than a twelve foot traffic lane is an example, a ten foot travel, travel lane. But probably more importantly, we're suggesting that we do a parkway strip, and we're, we're setting aside and reserving about nine feet. The reality is, this nine feet is measured from the face of curb to where the sidewalk might start. And in the end of the day, because a curb has a width in and of itself, which could be six, eight, ten inches in width, we may end up with only eight feet of landscape area. This is important to be used potentially for low impact design, development standards, meeting our stormwater obligations. But more importantly, to be used to soften that street section. And then generally, these are landscaped, and we've got to comply with, you know, the state's model landscape standards, which really frowns on landscaping narrow landscape areas. We've got issues with Crawford Road, honestly. If you've driven on Crawford Road or walked on Crawford Road in the crossroads area, you'll see that a number of the trees rayed with ashes that are planted. They're pretty. But if you take a closer look, even though they had root, root barriers planted on them, the, the roots in the trees are starting to unearth not only the, the lands, the irrigation that supplies the water to the trees, but also is starting to adversely affect the sidewalk and the adjacent curb and gutter, because it's too narrow. It's only like four feet, four or five feet. So you actually need a wider space, not only for LAD, but also for landscaping and to prevent overspray, if you will, of irrigation water on, you know, non-landscaping type things. So that's, that's an important component. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Another, another part of this is streetscapes along Patterson Road. We'll talk about this at the very end of our agenda, because we're going to have a neighborhood workshop on the, in the end of this month about Patterson Road. But Patterson Road forms a southern boundary of the downtown specific plan. It's very much a part of this planning effort in trying to come up with a comprehensive strategy to move vehicles, and in some cases, commercial vehicles, and also allow pedestrians and bicyclists to pass safely from east to west along the Patterson Corridor. Quite frankly, this is an issue the city's been dealing with forever. I've got several documents in my file dating back to the early nineties where, quite frankly, we're end up coming up with the same solution, and this is the solution we're coming up with, where we're suggesting a bike path on the north side, we're suggesting the normal separation, you know, the two travel lanes, a center turn lane, because we've got signalized movements at Roselle and First Street, and then Third, and then Terminal and Eighth, and then a sidewalk, a continuous sidewalk on the south side. So the plan, the downtown specific plan embraces this same kind of concept that we're still working with the community beyond the, the plan bound, plan boundaries, quite frankly, all the way to claws. Because the intent is to get the people that live along this corridor to the high school or to downtown area or to place of work. So this becomes a fairly important corridor, not only for vehicles, but also for pedestrians. And I, you know, as you know, we all travel the same road. I mean, it's got, you know, the sidewalk's not consistent. You know, with the, the, the bicycle paths, you know, are there and then they disappear. Anyway, we're trying to come up with an ultimate design solution to resolve as many of these issues as we can. It's, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's not all going to happen at once. We've got to have a design concept, and as we have money available, then we're going to come in and improve it. So it's going to take a number of years to complete the vision, but we've got to start somewhere. This is a continuation of that same Patterson Road. You'll notice I went from eighty feet to seventy-five feet, quite frankly, because, because we don't have eighty feet of right of way. And the railroads have told us, BNSF mainline, BNSF representatives have told us, we have to stay out of the right of way. Even though they have extra right of way, we have to stay out. So that's, that's what we're doing. We're honoring, honoring their statements to us that we can't use their right of way. We've got to use the right of way that we currently have. So we're keeping, you know, we're losing a little bit of, you know, the buffer that we would normally get and/or we're losing a travel lane. You'll see the travel lanes go down in size from a twelve foot travel lane to eleven, eleven and a half. But we're trying to make it work. Same thing here. Now I've gone down to sixty-five. Now I've gone from four, four travel lanes and a center turn lane to, you know, one travel lane going east and two travel lanes coming west. But this meets the intent of the traffic analysis that was done as part of the downtown specific plan, the traffic analysis that's done in our general plan, and corresponds with the right of way we have. Same thing here, Terminal to Eighth. This is actually beyond the plan. I'm not sure why this is even in here. Okay, so the next, next discussion, which is major, and we've had this discussion before, is that a, a major part of the downtown specific plan was to somehow come up with a, a connecting vehicle, some kind of design, a, some kind of a design component that would connect the investment that's made in the downtown core area with what could be new urbanized development of the Sun Garden Ganji property. The original concept was for a road underpass for Santa Fe to pass under the BNSF mainline. We've done some cost estimates based, based on similar projects in the Berset area and not too far away, that suggest this would be about an eight million dollar capital expense. The commitments that the city council has made with Sun Garden Ganji is that that improvement item would be an improvement item that the entire city, new development within the city of Riverbank, would have to pay for. So it wouldn't be a complete obligation of Sun Garden Ganji, nor would it be an obligation of those properties developing in the downtown specific plan area. So, so that's a concept. An alternative concept is some kind, some kind of pedestrian overpass. This happens to be the overpass that City Modesto built in, in correspondence with Modesto City Schools with Enoch's, Enoch's High School, crossing over Sylvan. So this, this can be built, obviously, for much less than a pedestrian under, underpass and still provide the connectivity that's necessary between the downtown core area and the new redevelopment areas suggested in the Sun Garden Ganji property. Takes less right of way, and there's other aspects, I think, that might work as well. So that's, that's something that this commission is going to need to make a recommendation to city council on, quite frankly. And again, there's another concept. You know, we tried to pull, you know, examples that weren't, that, that number one are locals. There's a local example. And something that we have seen or were aware of that might, might work, this one's a little bit artistic, but, you know, it, it provides an example of pedestrian connection up and over a rail yard. That, that, that's what we're trying to, you know, we're trying to suggest as an example. Again, part of the plan, mitigation measures, it's actually now going to be part of the downtown, excuse me, part of the Nexus analysis, part of the system development fees are the traffic signals that are required to service not only downtown specific plan, but also the growth areas that are planned as part of the general plan. And these areas are also called way find, wayfinders, and that's what's suggested as part of the plan. And then current, you know, financing. Well, the reality is that we're not, we don't, the plan doesn't really suggest one type of financing district. In all likelihood, the improvements that are demanded as part of the downtown specific plan in and of itself have been folded into the system development fees. So you pay a fee and those items, you know, will be part of the master fee program. It's unlikely that we'll end up forming some type of community facilities district, Melrose district to fund or finance any of the master improvements. So we may or may not form business, business improvement district. You know, that, quite frankly, is something the council may, may end up dealing with. But these are tools that are suggested in the plan and tools that can be brought forward should the city council feel, feel it's appropriate. And then, of course, there's always community development block grants, and then we talked about business improvement districts, which, by the way, business improvement district is, really, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a tax. It's the business owners within the defined area that agree to assess themselves dollars in order to make certain improvements, whether it's facade improvements or marketing materials or whatever it is to promote their business and promote the downtown area. And that may be something the council feels is appropriate in the future. And this downtown specific plan would give them the tool to do that. Enterprise funds, these are some other areas, and of course, development impact fees. Oh, okay, so, you know, a specific plan, like any other document, like the general plan, is a living, living, breathing document. We provided opportunities for minor modifications to the document, which could be approved by the director. But if there are substantive changes to the downtown specific plan, those require, those changes, those amendments would, would require review by the commission and approval by the city council. Very specific, just, just like any other type of document. So that language is in the, in the downtown specific plan, and quite frankly, it wasn't in the previous version. So it's very clearly in this document as the implementation strategy. And then, of course, the other thing I added is to make sure that the mitigation measures that are part of this certified EIR two thousand thirteen are, are part of the downtown specific plan, that it'll actually be shown as appendix A to the adopted specific plan. They're not new mitigation measures. Again, they're the same mitigation measures that are part of the two thousand thirteen plan. At this point, staff is recommending approval of the downtown specific plan. We're recommending approval of the modifications to the general plan land use maps as we've illustrated. We have received and we've shared with you a letter from the attorney who represents Sun Garden Ganji. That letter was received by us this afternoon. That letter is part of the administrative record, addresses two primary issues. The first has to do with neighborhood streets, and I'll, I'll talk about that in a minute. And the second issue, and, and quite frankly, the issue there has to do with the width of the parkway strips. And the second issue has to do with clarification relative to, relative to the Cannery's district's participation in the, the connectivity facility, whatever it might be, that connects the Cannery District to the downtown core area. And I've already stated that, that issue, and it's going to, it is actually, the down, the, the system development fees, the revised study is going to council twenty, when's it going? April, no, March, March twenty-fourth, I think. March twenty-fourth, and it, in the, the current document as published includes an underpass, until that's been changed by the council to include something different. So it's already in the downtown specific plan, or excuse me, already in the citywide system development fee program. So, so we've honored the commitment that was made, and, you know, we're, we're consistent with what issues being raised by Sun Garden Ganji on number two. Number one having to do with neighborhood streets. I'll back up to that one, one drawing. Where is that? Typical residential street, where we're suggesting a nine foot planter strip. What I've shared with you, and I've also shared this with Sun Garden Ganji folks, is what I have as part of the general plan circulation element, which in a residential condition, which would be a my, which be, would be, well, they're suggesting as a residential collector, there's, you're saying eighty-two to eighty-seven feet of right of way and a ten foot parkway, planter strip. And there's, staff will be bringing back to the planning commission into the city council, a new table which more clearly articulates where we think we're going with our street sections. But if I was to adhere to the general plan standards, I'd be going to ten foot planter strip. And, and I think in the end of the day, we'll end up with something like eight. So, and this, in this example, I'm showing nine. And I'm showing, by the way, a sixty-four footer right of way, not, you know, eighty-two. So again, I think, I think we've balanced all the competing needs. We've done the best we can to accomplish, you know, the end. Quite frankly, I'm still concerned long-term about maintenance associated with some of these low impact development standards that we implement as we try to control and contain stormwater onsite as opposed to collecting it and disposing of it to the Stanislaus River as an example. But we'll deal, we'll be dealing with that, just like every other jurisdiction in the state of California is going to be dealing with it, you know, from here on forever. Because we have an obligation with the state, it's part of our new permit, to treat all stormwater at the source, and that's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to accomplish. So, okay, so that's Lucy's letter. There's general plan circulation element. Downtown specific plan, January of two thousand fifteen, and the environmental documents. The, the resolutions that you have in your package were actually drafted before we had the change in chairmanship and vice chairmanship. So we have, we have new resolutions that reflect the proper signatures of the current sitting chairperson and vice chairperson. So that, that needs to be, I need to state that as well. Other than that, the resolutions are exactly the same a, as presented. The staff report and the downtown specific plan, the staff report's been available on the website. Of course, it's always available in the community development department, you know, up, up front in the counter. And then, of course, the downtown specific plan's been available, you know, for, well, since January. So. The, see, the radish sheet, as I've already talked about, is attachment five, and that's, that's shown on page one thirty. So that's a list of all potential changes. So those are the changes I'm suggesting, and then, of course, we'll add to it based on your direction tonight, and that'll be presented to council at their meeting of April fourteenth. That's what we're intending to go to council with us. Attachment six, turning on page one thirty-four is the proposed general plan changes. There's a map and then also a, a summary list of all of the, the properties, APN, ownership, addresses, acreage, current GP, existing use, proposed GP. All of these property owners have been noticed individually, so they're aware of what's going on. And then, starting on page one forty, is attachment seven, which is the suggested planning commission resolution for approval of the general plan changes. And then, starting on page one, one forty-four is attachment eight, which is the suggested resolution by your commission recommending that the city council approve the specific plan and the rezone. That's a lot, but it's not the, fortunately for us, it's not the first time we've talked about the downtown specific plan. So I don't know if there's any other questions that you have of us or of the materials that have been presented to you.
Commissioners, do you have any question for Mr. Anderson?
Not this time for me.
At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing for anyone from the audience to speak on this item three point one.
Start with the notification.
Could you please, for the record, could you please state your name and?
Evelyn Halbert. Start with the notification, what? Okay, start with the notification. This specific plan dated in January two thousand fifteen came out sometime in January. There was no notice. There was nothing published, posted, and nobody knew it was out there until a notice came out in March regarding the public hearing for tonight. But there was no, nothing posted down here, nothing published. Nobody knew it was there. No comment period, nothing. The agenda for tonight came out last week. You guys got it Thursday? It was posted very late Thursday afternoon after four thirty. And the office closed, and it was closed for three days. And the office closed, and it was closed for three days, because they were closed on Friday, so it was not available to the public. They put it online into two file, one was thirty-four thousand seventy-seven kilobytes, the other was fifty thousand five hundred forty-seven kilobytes. And if you use computers, you know that's almost impossible to open. Those are huge. I came down here yesterday to look at the book a little bit, I couldn't get them open. Today, they were nice enough to give me a copy of it, but it was way too late to go through all this stuff to know what's going on tonight. Brown Act said it's supposed to be made available when it's made available to the council or the commission, and it wasn't done. There was no way to go through all this. There's changes, and there's three pages of changes in here. That, there's no way we would know what they are, we would go back and read them, whether they're punctuation or whether they're something else, there's no way for the public to know. So, you have changes we don't know about. And I think that's totally inadequate, I think it violates the Brown Act. It should have been made available, and it's been made available to you. As far as this plan, the general plan, the EIR, it very specifically stated, when they, when they updated it in 2009, that the goal policies and information measures included throughout the general plan prevent against disruption of existing communities, and no aspect of the general plan would divide an existing community, existing community. So, there would be less than significant impact in that part of the land use. Okay? Wouldn't disrupt it, it wouldn't divide it. Now, we're, I'm in R2 downtown, which is gonna be rezoned to medium-density residential. And you sit here and you tell me nothing's gonna change, you're still gonna be R2, there's gonna be no disruption, there's no good. First of all, you chopped off half of that thing at Fourth Street and divided the existing residential. Because Topeka goes from the Cannery, this middle section of Topeka goes from the Cannery to Cardoza, and on the other side. You chopped this up. That divides the community. Second of all, as far as disruption, you can sit here and say that we're gonna stay what we are now, but that's not what your plan says. Your plan says that my medium residential, which is supposed to be two duplexes or whatever, can now have apartments and motels and hotels, it can have live work, and it can have commercial. It might as well be mixed use. Tell me what the difference is between that and mixed use. That's disrupting, very disrupting to an established residential neighborhood. I have, also have concerns with the three residential streets and the parking, because we have diagonal parking. If you know anything about R2 and having duplexes and extra double-dunes and stuff, you need parking. They're gonna turn it into parallel parking. And that doesn't take into consideration, the parking that's in this thing, where that area takes, no, it's not taken into consideration for the commercial or the live work. So, where are they gonna park? So, here's our parking, and we go somewhere else? That's disrupting the neighborhood. It doesn't protect us in any way like the general plan said it would. It doesn't protect the historical parts downtown. The general plan requires that the city have a full list of historical structures downtown, not just, not just six little businesses or the bank and what you listed. It's gotta be that, it's gotta be the homes, too. There's a lot more down here that's historical besides those six places you listed. This general plan was nine years ago, and they still don't have it. Or six years ago, 2009, six years ago, and they still haven't done it. They have no idea. But I'm very opposed, I still, I have not seen any explanation as to why you have to chop up an existing neighborhood. What's gonna happen if you take out the rest of that existing neighborhood and leave us out? You say it's gonna affect it, but you have not shown any studies, you've shown nothing as how it's gonna affect it. Nothing. The EIR, when the EIR was done for downtown, it was not done for the existing downtown or the neighborhood or anything else. It was done for the Cannery. There is a signed agreement with that Cannery. And they signed it on August 24th, 2009. It's a twenty-three-page agreement with the city. They even included in their agreement their land use summary. And if you look at the numbers, if you want, you can see this, if you look at the numbers for residential, if you look at the numbers for square footage for retail, everything is exactly what's in the specific plan, the EIR right now. And this was done clear back in April, in 2009. They were supposed to pay eighty thousand for the EIR. They didn't pay anything. So, they got a specific plan without paying, now they're getting, they got the EIR without paying, taxpayers get stuck with it. When they put the, sent out the RFP to get the consultant to do the EIR, they attached a forty-five-page Cannery reuse project. Which, this is just part of it, there's a table of contents, there's the land use summary, all that. They attached it. And on the RFP, they, it states in here that the consultant was to do analysis on two. The first activity, the land use activity was on the tomato processing plant, the Cannery, and the second activity was the underpass. They used the money from the overpass fund to pay for the EIR based on using the underpass, because they never paid for it. So, don't say, sit there and say there's no agreement with them. It's signed, and I can show you the signatures. And there is a project, reuse project out there. And if you look at one of the pages in this plan, it's the same company, it's EMC Planning, and it's got the same name on it, Cannery Use Project. This whole EIR was done for them, not for us. And if you look through this whole specific plan, there's nothing in there, there's no studies on the downtown, on existing downtown, nothing. We were totally left out of this, we're just being used for more, would you call it more rooftops to support the Cannery?
So, for the sake of time, I think you've gone past time, but I certainly would like to move over to Mr. Anderson. Is there anything that you can say in conclusion after all of these different issues that you brought up?
I think I pretty much covered it all. I mean, what can I say, there's, like I said, you're sitting there saying one thing about medium density and how it's not gonna change, and your specific plan says something else. It says right in there, we're gonna get stuck with commercial, live work, we're gonna get stuck with everything. Or is that, is that not a mixed use?
We'll have Mr. Anderson address these issues, and thank you very much for your comments. So, Mr. Anderson, there's, there's a number of issues that were brought up.
You wanna keep going through the public hearing, and then I'll, I'll circle back on these issues?
I think that that would be appropriate, then. Is there anyone else that is here to speak to these, to this item? Item 3.1? The downtown specific plan? Okay. Hearing, hearing none, then we will be closing the public hearing, and we'll be opening up discussion with staff.
Okay, there's a, Ms. Halbert raised a number of issues. I think, you know, the bottom line in, you know, I think her argument is, well, there's a number of points to her argument, but, you know, what, what you're considering tonight is a land use decision. Decisions that the city council, the former city council made relative to funding the effort, relative to entering into contractual arrangements with property owners within the plan area are issues that have already been, already been handled at city council level. So, what we're doing is we're making a recommendation based on a land use plan that's presented to you, that's been vetted in the public. And quite frankly, it's been vetted in the public, you know, quite a long time, and even been given, you know, more opportunity for folks, including Mrs. Halbert, to question certain issues as we move forward. So, I actually take exception to the fact that Mrs. Halbert is saying that she has now became aware of the fact that we have the January document available, because, because we made every effort to make sure that she was aware, that the public were, anybody that had concerns with the downtown specific plan, they knew that that document was, was available for comment. And, and, and either if it was a CD or physically a copy of the document. Unfortunately, the city's website isn't exactly the easiest thing to negotiate. City council has made a conscious decision to spend hard-earned money to update the website, and we're doing it as expeditiously as we possibly can. Meanwhile, documents are available, you know, either at our counter, you know, North Hall, South Hall, library, wherever, they're available, you know, so, so that, that's not really an issue. There are a couple of commitments that are made in the general plan, and those commitments are carried forward in the downtown specific plan. And one is that we need to do a parking inventory. Because, because in the end of the day, there's gonna have to be some kind of an assignment for part, of parking, of public parking to buildings, to uses, et cetera. So, that's, that's gotta happen, it's on the work plan, so to speak. The other is coming up with a historical site survey. Mrs. Halbert mentioned that, you know, we referenced historical sites that are known in this document. You know, we have to, we have to only reference what we're aware of without doing additional research. So, does that eliminate, you know, doing a complete historical site survey off the planning department's list of things to do? No, we'll do that. But what we've done is we've acknowledged in the plan that there are structures of historical significance that have been referenced by, quite frankly, the Riverbank Historical Society, and those are documented, and that we've referenced those back in this, in this plan. You know, the, the general plan designation changes that we're suggesting roll back the densities that are consistent with those residential neighborhoods along Topeka. The land use classifications that we've assigned based on this district map that's before you tonight, and it's also part of the downtown specific plan, suggest that these would be downtown neighborhood-type uses, and that, and that's what we're suggesting. Which, by the way, is consistent with the medium-density residential designation we're suggesting. It's pretty much consistent with the R2 zoning that they have right now, and certainly consistent with what might happen, you know, in the future. So, so I think we've addressed that issue as well. You know, I think, you know, we, there's a number of people that participated in, in the original discussions with council, with this commission on this downtown specific plan, and most of those folks, you know, you know, thought that this planning effort was concluded, quite frankly. But it wasn't, I mean, there was obviously some concerns that needed to be addressed. And I, and I think the latest document that we have in front of you, including the errata sheet, and there's some of the technical changes that we have, we have suggested in this document are important, and ultimately need to be presented to council for additional adjustments. And like I said, it's a living document, and we've provided an administrative section to the downtown specific plan to allow for future modifications, both minor and major, as things come up, as things arise. So, I don't really know what else to say other than what I've just said.
Already closed. Unless you're gonna reopen it to the floor.
Well, I'll go ahead and hear your question, we'll reopen it to the floor. Okay.
Zoning in the R2. The regulating code, R2 says it is R2, the regulating codes allows for commercial, live work, and everything else in there, which is not what it allows in there now. My question is, why do you, can you not take the live work and the commercial out of the regulating code? And leave us residential like we are now?
Okay, is that your final question, then? Okay, we will be closing the public hearing.
So, so, okay, so looking at the district zone regulations, what we're talking about is properties along Topeka, which are designated as downtown neighborhood, which, as I've suggested, it allows, allows residential, it allows lodging, it allows civic and culture, does not allow general commercial or corridor commercial or destination retail or entertainment. That's, so when we go to, to enforce the types of land uses that might be allowable under the downtown neighborhood, this is the chart we'd go to. This is what we would use.
Why does it need to allow live work?
I'm, I'm responding to the commission. Thank you.
On page forty-seven, on the definition of downtown neighborhood, it allows for loss of upper stories of commercial buildings.
Excuse me, the floor has been closed, and you've exceeded in your, your time for any further comment. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, there's Brown's Act thing. If attorney can elaborate on that.
The, the Brown Act requires, that the, the Brown Act requires that the materials be provided, I believe, seventy-two hours before the meeting. Documents, to my knowledge, were available publicly as well, and, and to the development director has acknowledged that they were available at the counter as well. So, it seems to me that there's, there's no Brown Act issue right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Any, any further questions, commissioners?
I understand this correctly, we have to approve the amendment before we can approve the?
Yes, yeah, in fact, I provided for that in the draft resolution that I presented to you tonight, and that's found on page 140.
I move for resolution, approval of Resolution Number 2015-010, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Riverbank, California, approving the general plan amendment redesignating, redesignating some eighty-three parcels comprised of eighteen-point-four-nine acres to low-density residential, mixed-use, medium-density residential, high-density residential, and civic, as shown on the attached land use map, a project known as the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second then.
Roll call vote, please.
For Stuart?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I almost said yes.
Not used to it yet. I did that last time. Vice Chair Dinkley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
And Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Well, I move we adopt Resolution 2015-11, recommending to the city council the approval of the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan and the ordinance number 2015-XXX to rezon the downtown specific plan area to specific plan number three.
Then, might I, might I ask that that motion also include the errata sheet, the changes to the downtown specific plan that are shown on page 130 as Attachment Five to your staff report? And then, so there's no confusion, I need a recommendation from you as the, to the type of connectivity device that your commission recommends between the Sun Garden Ganges properties in the downtown core area, on or about the Santa Fe alignment? Sorry.
I'll pardon the same resolution. I guess we should discuss that before we go to the reso, the motion?
It's certainly part of the discussion. So, why don't you get a second, and then you guys can talk about it before you vote.
Okay. So, we'll need to get a second on that motion?
Awesome.
Okay, and now we can have a discussion?
Well, we're not, hold on. Are we doing that motion to, to approve or not approve the, what I just put forth?
The motion that you just put forth?
So, clarify if you will, do we need to discuss the connectivity issue as a separate item?
Well, I mean, it's part of the plan, so, you know, the motion needs to have a recommendation relative to that element of the plan, because the way it's structured right now, it's an option. Because I haven't officially received direction on that yet, so it needs to be presented as an option. And your recommendation, of course, will be discussed and presented as your recommendation to city council.
Commissioners, do you have any comments on, on the connectivity?
I do.
Issue?
Yeah, the ballpark figure, what's, what's the price difference between the two?
You know, it's, at this point, it's just kind of a, you know, a best guess, quite honestly. You know, we're looking at eight million dollars for an underpass based on what Merced spent a couple of years on a project, you know, there in their jurisdiction. You know, some of the overpasses that have been built, the one there at Enoch's is two million, so I say three million. So it's, you know, not eight, but it's not free, and you're probably about three million dollars.
And Mr. Anderson, can you confirm, as was discussed earlier, regarding this connectivity issue, that we can go back and modify later on if, as things change?
Modify in what way? I mean, the reality is if your commission feels it's inappropriate, or the council, for that matter, feels it's inappropriate to have any form of connectivity, the council can direct staff through modification to the specific plan to do something else.
So, do you have, does the commission have a position on connectivity in general?
I do. I've got a few comments. One is that, you know, fundamentally, this idea has been with the plan from, it sounds like, from the beginning. And that plan partially is based on market studies that were done by the, the commission by the, or questioned by the city. And I think they were looking to provide not only connectivity, but also the opportunity to grow together. And we're talking about the old town and the so-called, the new portion of what would be considered now part of the downtown. So in a sense, you're really cutting off, you're separating these things. So you don't have the opportunities to grow together and take advantage of synergy that you would get with free flow of traffic, either pedestrian or traffic. The other issue is there may be a concern regarding safety as far as fire and police. Say, for example, if what happens if the train stuck down on the tracks down here, and they can't get over there within the required, whatever that time might be, you know, a minute could be a long time. So I'm wary to really close off completely. My thinking is that it's an opportunity that we could probably really regret in the future if we don't take advantage of it.
I acknowledge what Commissioner Dagley just said, because it has been part of the plan from day one. I, you know, and in this point, you know, I'm coming in late into the picture relative to this design component. I can tell you, however, I've talked to fire and sheriff, emergency services, relative to their need for a vehicular connection east-west in this location. And quite frankly, their comment is, as long as, you know, with the, if they didn't have the viaduct, it'd be an issue. With the viaduct, it's a non-issue. What they really need, what they really need is a point of connectivity, vehicular connectivity, somewhere south of Patterson Road. Because between Patterson and Clarabelle, it's almost a mile. And they don't have anything east-west between those two points of connection. So it's, there's a bigger, from their perspective, from a safety perspective, there's a bigger need for an east-west connection south of Patterson Road, more so than north of Patterson Road. That's all I know. That's what I've been told.
And that's considering the safety issues as well?
Considering safety issue. That's not setting aside the fact that traffic does back up significantly at Patterson when there are trains that are sitting on the tracks. It happens. We all see it. But we got the viaduct, so.
But where would this actually be?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
The Santa Fe?
Santa Fe is the, that's the alignment. That was the original plan.
The overpass, because you have, we have an overpass that I guess runs back here off of one oh eight, right? Am I right? Is that two oh, one twenty?
By the church?
Yeah. Yeah, right there. So that's an overpass. So we're talking about the next one?
Well, again, again, looking at this diagram here, you got the viaduct, right? This is working? It's not working? Why is this not working? Yeah, it is. We got the viaduct here, right? So you have this overpass. And what the plans was suggesting was an underpass here on Santa Fe. And then I've already talked about the Patterson Road improvements that we're suggesting in here to clean this all up for bicycles and pedestrians and whatnot. And by the way, it's not going to be cheap because we got, I don't know, we got all kinds of switchgear and stuff in here, some of which is manual, some of which is electronic. So we're going to be meeting with BNSF officials again to try to, you know, decipher that all out.
Okay, what I'm concerned about is if we say we would recommend the overpass. No, the overpass.
Pedestrian overpass?
Pedestrian overpass.
Yeah, the examples that we were provided tonight are not really what I think would be the best for us if we're going to have an overpass. I think that it should be wide enough to accommodate bicycles and pedestrians. And it should be a beautiful thing. It should be an enjoyable, an enjoyable walk to use that overpass. Something that would entice people to actually walk from one point to another over that overpass.
The, there's no problem with the commission having review authority over the design of that overpass.
Okay.
As an obligation of this plan.
And also...
And the reality is, I think, my opinion is, it'll be a city-initiated project. So what's going to end up happening is fees will be collected to a point where you have critical mass and/or grants, cash, grants, and other dollars, which would enable us to design and build it. Probably be designed first and then built ultimately. But if the concern is we want to make sure that it's something that's usable and the commission has the review authority over, absolutely.
And I think also, previously, we brought up handicapped issues with regard to the overpass as well. So that was another...
Well, it's going to have to be ADA. There's no question it's got to be ADA. In fact, the example that we gave you, which is the one out in front of Enoch's, you know, it's rather elaborate because, because of the ADA requirements. I mean, you look at some of those ramps, I mean, that's not a simple deal. They had to meet, you know, they had to meet ADA. More so than the ramp that's over by Johansson. More so by the ramp than now and than that ramp.
So we're looking at the, an overpass would be less, I guess, intensive, meaning that if we go under, then we got other issues as far as drainage, as far as other security measures, as far as height.
Cost.
And controlling the particular type of transportation that can go through there. Whereas if we had an overpass, those kind of things are pretty much limited.
Yep. And the other, I mean, another issue, I mean, not to degrade what some of the original concepts were for the vehicular connection. You know, there are folks in town, including Mrs. Halbert, that are very concerned about traffic flow and circulation. You know, you make that vehicular connection, and now you've got a direct connection, you know, to S R one oh eight and, you know, and to First. So that, I think, is a big issue. And I think it's certainly a concern that the existing residents in the downtown core area have always had with that kind of a plan. So I'll represent that, because I've heard it from more than one individual.
Commissioners? Any other questions?
I'm for the overpass. I think it has, have a better chance of having a more of an aesthetic appeal, something to the city, rather than an underpass. Because it's, you know, to me, it's less visible, it's less, you know, and it's going to cost more either way. It'll cost more, I think, for us to maintain, not just pedestrian, but automobile traffic going under, the maintaining of the road, the maintaining of the ordinances, you know, whatever's going on with road construction or infrastructure. Rather than an overpass, it's going to immediately be appealing. You're going to see it just depend on a particular type of design that we have. And it's going to be more for bikers. I mean, we're more green in that sense. And then you'll get a chance, somebody walks up there, they can get a chance of a city view or what have you, you know, you people walking their dogs, riding their bikes, rather than, you know, more pedestrian. I mean, not more, having more pedestrian and less automotive throughput is, I think, that's probably what our twenty-five plan is, is that we want a more green atmosphere.
Are we ready for a motion then?
We have a motion on the table, and you have a second.
Excuse me, we have a motion, and so the discussion is now concluded?
Stuart, second it.
Okay.
So...
So we'd like to...
Well, okay, so we want to do resolution number twenty fifteen eleven with the revisions that included the errata sheet?
Yes.
Yes.
And the other...
Recommendation for the...
Which would be for?
The recommendation of what we want to do.
We want to do the, I think the overpass.
You want to do? I like the road, but I'm okay with the overpass, too. I think there's some benefits to that as well, so.
So you would have to modify your motion, and then you'd need a new second, and then you guys can vote on it. John, is that what she just did?
Yeah, I think, yeah, that's exactly what we're doing is, we are, let me, let me, I move to adopt resolution twenty fifteen dash eleven recommending city council the approval of the Riverbank Downtown Specific Plan ordinance number twenty fifteen dash 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 X X X to rezone the downtown specific plan area to specific plan number three and incorporating the errata sheet and with a recommendation by the Planning Commission for the connectivity to the design would be for an overpass.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dagley?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuart? And Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
And for the record, what I'll represent to council is that commission is concerned about the design of that pedestrian overpass and that they want that design to be presented back to them in a public, notice public hearing, so the public has a chance to participate in the design as well before it goes to construction. So you guys get an opportunity to look at the designs in advance. Okay.
Before we leave this topic, one other thing is, is there a tripping point or a threshold where that becomes required?
No, not at this point. I mean, it's a money thing. Quite frankly, it's a money thing. And that's the way it was structured from the very get-go. There was no tripping point. There was no threshold where it had to be built by a certain timeframe. Never was it presented, never was it, was, never was it presented that way. And quite frankly, it wasn't mitigation obligation as part of the project either.
Okay, in that regard, then, I think I read in here somewhere that the AB sixteen hundred is going to include part of, part of the money's going to come out of the fees for development?
Yes, it will.
Would we need to revise that document to reflect what we just talked about?
Council, when council takes action on the specific plan and they set that policy direction, that policy direction will also require adjustments in the AB sixteen hundred fee program to reflect that as an improvement item.
We'll move to number four, commission items.
I've got a question. I don't have an item. Can we get a kind of update as to what's going on with the property across the street from the police station here? The two-story, I think it was going to be low-income, but, or moderate income or something?
What I can tell you, again, it's one of those projects that I've touched because I've gotten involved in it. They're working on the civil designs associated with the parking lot. The original approval allowed them to park half the spaces on-site and half the spaces in the street. And they're having some spatial issues, so they're working on their civil drawings. That, that's kind of where that is. Anyway, yeah.
Okay, we mentioned something about the city, about the Del Rio. There is an escrow.
Yes.
So where are they at in the escrow process, and who is the potential buyer?
I have heard, but I don't know. It's not confirmed, so I would rather not say.
But it's an escrow, so it's got to be.
It's an escrow, but I don't know, you know, I don't know all the details. Do not know. And again, it's a transaction, quite frankly, that's between the state of California. And whoever is buying, whoever's buying it, yep. Well, let me back up. The Riverbank Oversight Authority, which was appointed by the state of California, is the agent that's working to sell the asset of the state of California, which is, in this case, the Del Rio Theater. Okay?
So I'd like to reference the commission item from last month where there was a change to, change of chairwomanship. And I want to acknowledge the extraordinary efforts of Joan Stewart. And she's been quite a tutor all these years. And it's just a funny feeling to have her on the left side of me than the right. I feel more right-sided with you, right, Joan? So I thank you so very much, and I'm so glad you're here tonight. You're feeling better.
Thank you.
Happy St. Patrick's Day. To those who celebrate.
I just asked Janet, I mean, I know when I served my eight years as planning commissioner in City of Series, they gave me a little plaque.
Well, she's way beyond that.
Normally, you get something like that for, you know, do you guys?
I think that that would be appropriate.
How many years did you serve as chairperson?
You know, forever. I suffered all through that general plan, and it just dawned on me that I'm the only commissioner or staff that was here during those interesting meetings when we were hammering out that general plan.
Oh.
I'm all that's left.
Yeah, she's the gold standard.
Yeah, thank you.
So if a plaque is appropriate, if that's something that we can move for, then we certainly would like to proceed with that.
Thank you.
Chairwoman Emeritus. Emeritus, excuse me.
Emeritus.
It sounds like an information or something. Emeritus. It's the water. Okay. So moving forward to number five, then, county referral correspondence information, information only. Five point one.
Yeah, we have a referral from Stanluss County for a project. It's a parcel map project, fairly small project. But quite frankly, because it's right across the street from a project that we just took action on, you know, I felt, well, obviously, any time I get a county referral, I always want to bring it to the commission, just like the cell tower. We commented on the cell tower. They wanted to build outside of town. But this is a ranchette land division off of Santa Fe at the corner of Snedeker. Again, the homes are there. There's a site plan. This whole matter starts on page one fifty, but then if you look at page, look at the one, page one fifty-nine and one page, page one sixty, one fifty-nine shows the land division that they're wanting to do and the fact there's existing homes. I think it's a, it's a father-son arrangement. Father lives in one house, and the son lives in the other. And they're wanting to create, you know, wanting to separate the son's home away from the dad's home. I think that's really what's happening here. And because we have required the developer on the south side of Santa Fe to improve the south side of Santa Fe and the intersection of Snedeker, because we want to complete improvements, I felt is important for the county to be aware that we're expecting the same kind of improvements for the north side. So we get something that's fairly consistent. I don't know if Stanluss County is actually going to enforce that, but what I've included is our exhibit cross-section for Santa Fe on page one seventy-five, which, again, is consistent with the approval for the Kerry Pope project. This was, this was Diamond Bar East, sorry, Diamond Bar East. And then what we're suggesting is, on page one seventy-five, where we have the sidewalk, the playing strip, the parking lane, the buffer, the bike path? Well, that's nice, two travel lanes, and again, the same on the north side. Again, they're kind of a rural condition. They may not want to have sidewalk, but at least we can get... Again, they're kind of a rural condition, they may not want to have sidewalk, but at least we can get, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, you know, we'll get what we get, but I wanna make sure that we get the sufficient right-of-way to represent this type of cross-section.
I have a question, John.
Yeah.
Um, I'm imagining the agenda's done before all of the attachments and so on, but oftentimes during our meetings, we'll have reference pages and so on and so forth. Is it, is it feasible that we can make those references within the body?
Of the agenda?
So, that's easier to access for us?
We can, we can try that. My experience is...
Or maybe a supplemental sheet of paper?
Yeah. My, my, my experience is the pages are always, you know, they're, they're always, you know, kind of last minute, you know what I'm saying?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
And we're trying to get the agenda published as quickly as we can.
So, I...
And every time, anytime you deal with page or pagination, you have issues. And quite frankly, I don't think your commission ever had these page numbers until I came along, because I always wanna make sure that I'm publishing, you know, a big document. It seems like everything I've done is big documents, and it's very difficult for us to reference.
Mm-hmm.
Easier for us to reference, sorry.
Certainly, you know, without it interfering with the...
Can we do that?
With the...
That'd be hard. Jan's looking at me, cross-eyed.
With the agenda, because you wanna get that out sooner, naturally, of course.
Yep. It's important.
But if we added a supplemental, maybe just like a contents or, you know, something like an index or something.
We'll see what we can do.
Like a point, it would be easier.
We'll try.
Because they're getting really large, you know, that, I mean, there's substantial amount of documentation here and a lot of work.
We try.
Yes, and it's, you know, even, you know, when you get everything online, it'd be nice to have just some kind of little reference point.
We'll do, do the best we can.
You don't have to do it for everything, but maybe some of the main, main points.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay.
So, on this county referral, I'm asking your thoughts regarding this two parcel land division as it relates to Santa Fe Street. Do you think the staff's in the right by saying that we need to stick to this? This is what we're suggesting, this is what we're doing on the south side, so...
Stick to having it separated?
Stick to this, asking the county for right-of-way to correspond with what we're asking for the, from the developer on the south, and then asking for improvements, or at least suggesting that they be under obligation to make improvements. Counties could do what they're gonna wanna do.
But what's happening with the two single-family dwellings?
Nothing. All they're doing is doing a land division. They're on one parcel now.
That Riverbank, or you said...
That is...
They're on one parcel, and they're requesting two.
That is the Riverbank sphere of influence.
But...
It's in the county.
It's county, right?
It's a county land division. We are commenting on a county land division application.
Because you mentioned something here about its setbacks would be, what, asking for variance? Because the normal lot size or something?
They're asking for a variance, because, because the county zoning on this site is A210. A210 is agricultural, 10-acre minimum. They're asking for a variance as part of their land division application, because the size of the parcel right now is 3.95 acres, and at the end of the land division is gonna be even smaller yet. So, they're falling under the 10-acre minimum parcel size.
And it's irrigated.
And apparently, it's irrigated.
So, that would, um, so do we have any other parcels that have gone this way, that, that is like a comparison?
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. Over time, there's been several. I mean, you look, look right down Santa Fe, you've got a number of one-acre parcels.
Correct.
So, why is the family, um, displaying, they said this is a hardship matter?
I have no idea.
Well, I think what they're trying to say is...
Well, it's a hardship, probably, because one's trying to refinance, or wants to be able to sell, or make some kind of financial commitment, and they're bound, because it's on one league person.
Because it's one.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well...
But they, obviously, in the end of the day, they chose to build two houses on one property. So, you know, if the county grants approval of this, you know, which, again, is a county matter, it's not a city matter. The county's referring it to us to provide reasonable comments, you know, relative to this project, and, you know, its proximity to the city and what we might suggest.
So, importantly, then, then our comments would be regarding the improvements that will be brought to the south side, and then also, as you mentioned...
On the north side.
On the north side as well, to mirror that.
Right, to mirror.
But it's also supporting a division, a, a, a new subdivision.
Well, that's something that we're not going to, it's not our issue.
Well, again, maybe, that is absolutely part of it. I mean, that's, that is, that is an issue. Do you, do we support land division of, of this property?
Okay, so, okay, so that's different than just the improvements.
Well, I mean, you know, it, well, I mean, it is, they're asking for our, our comments on the project. The project is as presented, a variance and a parcel map.
Okay.
Quite frankly, the houses are already there. When I look at it, you know, does it frustrate the ability of the property to be developed in urban nature if it were to be annexed in the City of Riverbank? And the answer is no, because really, the ranchettes that have been built kind of frustrate that. So, okay, they are what they are, but they end up with residual acreage on the west end of their property that could be developed in urban manner.
So, we don't have, like, over in that area is not like a lot of ranchettes.
There's quite a few. I mean, you look at some of the...
Because what I'm looking at is when something like this happens, is it going to affect the, the value of the area? Because when someone does a survey on the potential value of a property, you know, you look for similar and like properties.
Yeah.
And if this one, the particular one, is very odd in there, it, it could mess with the, the value of other properties in the area.
Yeah. Well, again, we're not really, I mean, our, our, you know, again, we're looking at land, land use and land use-related aspects of the, of the land application. And if you look at the overall development of the area, you know, again, Stanluss County Planning Commission's gonna have to do this. And you look at page 155, and you look at the size of the properties further east on Santa Fe, I mean, I think the argument can be made, it's pretty consistent.
Correct.
What they're doing is pretty consistent.
Okay.
You know, and from the, from my perspective, I'm more concerned with making sure that Santa Fe is a whole road, as opposed to, as opposed to, you know, just not, we're not getting what we need. I mean, because ultimately, it'll be developed in an urban state. Right, and right now, these properties receive city water, which is really odd to me, but they receive Riverbank water.
Oh, they do.
Yeah, they do.
But it's only for one address?
Two.
Oh, it's...
Two. Each, each house receives water from the City of Riverbank.
One has a meter?
Yes.
Each house, what about electricity?
Uh, I don't, probably PG&E, I would imagine.
Oh, well, then, that's a no-brainer, then. It just should be zapped. I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Why did I really wanna do that?
Well, again, that's, yeah. Again, it's a land, land use issue that Stanluss County's gonna have to deal with.
Pretty much two parcels.
Okay, well, it's two houses.
Yeah. Okay, so what do we need to do?
Just direct, give, give staff direction as to what you think our comments should be.
Well, I, I think go for the, if you can get the improvements, you know, you can make a case that, you know, why not do it all at the same time, and there's a significant synergy with that. But it doesn't hurt to put your, your, the intention...
We're gonna ask them, too, they do.
Eventually, you know, why not do it now and...
Who would have to pay for the improvements?
The property owners, the land, the persons doing the land division.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. That's the way it works. You develop your property, then you, you pay.
Well, not only that, but the property value would probably be increased a little bit if he is, if he's a savvy person. They, they'd probably stand to say, look, you know, I can sell this property now, it's already improved. It's got, could go to a sidewalk.
Well, this would be, you know, this would be burned.
The way that I would word it, the way that I would word it, you know, to be, on all fairness, is that we wanna make sure that the right-of-way is preserved, and that we'd be willing to allow them with a called deferred improvement agreement, that the city could call when and if development on the south side occurs. Because obviously, if we don't get development on the south, just because we approved the project doesn't mean they're physically gonna go out and do it, right? I mean, we approved all these projects in '06, and not many of them have been developed. So, they have a timeframe with Diamond Bar East of two years to validate the map, that can be extended. But when they improve Santa Fe, it would be nice to get the improvements on both sides.
Okay.
So, I think that's a good word.
Yeah, we're doing it that way, because you're, yeah, they'll have plenty of warning.
And as far as the housing, I don't know, what are, what are their suggestions?
They don't want anything, of course. They just wanna land division. They're two existing houses, and they're in a ranchette area, and, you know, they already enjoy access off the roads and let, you know, let it go.
Yeah, I think we just should go along with it. Okay, John?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, I won't be surprised if they say, we're not doing it.
Well, we, you know, we, we won't be surprised if there's, there's more of these cases, with more of these...
Well, you look like you said, in the area, I see some that are smaller.
And we can make a case for it, though.
Okay, I don't need an official position. I mean, I, I'm hearing what you're saying, so that, that's good.
Okay, so we, we would like to direct the staff, as discussed.
Okay. And then, um, yeah, so what else we got? What else we got on the agenda? Oh, upcoming meeting, agenda items, we have Cuffel parcel map, um, that, um, China House, is that what it is? China House.
Lucky House.
Lucky House, sorry. Lucky House, and then you've got the Tattoo U, and you've got the Tobacco, and then you've got CFN Gas, and you've got Auto Glass, and you have the Riverbank Recycler. And then what you have behind it, you have a tire shop, Leroy's Tires, I think, or something.
Like fiberglass?
No, that's next door, that's Smooth as Glass. Anyway, the property there, they're doing a, they're doing a land division to divide up the buildings independently, so they can sell them off individually.
All owned by one person?
All owned by one individual. Mr. Cuffel unfortunately passed away, so Mrs. Cuffel is working with the estate. The real issue there is, it's kind of a free-for-all between her property and SR 108. So, we met with Caltrans this week, and Caltrans is gonna require the area to be cleaned up, quite frankly, and it's gonna cost some money. So, we're working with, with Mrs. Cuffel to do it incrementally, so it's, so it's a doable project, as opposed to doing it all at once. But we're still waiting for what Caltrans is gonna say. So, that's a future project that's coming up. Galaxy Theaters have submitted a conditional use permit application to add IMAX, IMAX Theater, 435 seats, I think, to the west end of the building, using the same entrance as they currently enjoy. The issue there is that they're gonna be gobbling up parking, um, and we'll be evaluating that. But you'll, you'll see that in April, I think, your next, next commission.
The request was, I think, from your report, that they wanted a reduction on the amount of parking units.
Well, I mean, the, the issue there is, the issue there is that when Galaxy was approved way back when, the city staff gave them a variance to the parking standard. Our parking standards in the code suggest one parking space per three seats. The variance that was granted, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm recalling from memory, was one parking space per 4.6 seats, and they wanted to use that same standard. The reality is that counting the spaces versus the seats, now, remember, what Galaxy just did is they took out, well, they reduced their seating in half to do the luxury plus. Net, net, and all this is, the ra, the ratio that they would have with the IMAX, including the renovations they've done to the Galaxy Plus Theaters, the ratio of seats to parking is like one parking space per 3.4 seats. So, that's actually almost, it's almost in compliance with our code.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure we will continue, staff will support continuing to support the variance that was granted originally, because I think they're gonna be really close on parking. They're already close on parking now, quite frankly. You go by there during the middle of the week, and the parking lot's full, which is great. It means they're successful. There's not a lot of extra spaces. So, and I think when IMAX comes in, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tough.
Okay, so because they, they plan to do this additional work, then the agreement, the variance goes away and...
Well, it doesn't go away, it just becomes part of the discussion. They, they wanted to stay on the table, and I, I'm telling them it's part of the discussion, so. Absolutely, it's part of the discussion. Yeah, so that's, that's upcoming.
Okay. New business, then, number seven?
Yeah, on page 176 is annual review. We're, we're required, just like every other city and county in the state of California, to put together an annual report, both on the general plan and the housing element. Those need to be submitted to State OPR, and then also off to Housing Committee Development Department. And so, we're, we're doing that. We're, we're sharing with this commission the report, and we'll do this on an annual basis, and it's gonna go to council, which council's action will be to authorize us to submit to the state. That's all it is, so. So, it's presented to you tonight for information only. And then, item 72 has to do with Patterson Road. On page 217, there's a flyer that'll be mailed or hand-delivered to all the property owners and businesses along Patterson Road to suggest we're gonna do a walking tour. We already did a workshop, didn't have many people show up. So, we're gonna do a walking tour of Patterson Road on Saturday at 10 o'clock. And in fact, we've worked, negotiated with the Sheriff's Department to put up a mechanized informational board a week prior to this tour on Patterson Road, so everyone should be aware of the fact that we're gonna do this.
Okay.
The whole intent is to get the community engaged in coming up with a solution long-term relative to Patterson Road that everyone agrees with. And quite frankly, the one big issue is, in some areas, wow, even, I even have it here, don't I? In some areas along Patterson Road, we're suggesting to eliminate parking. So, here, here's an area between Terminal and Eighth, where to get the bike path, to get, you know, sidewalk, and to get at least three lanes of travel, I, you know, we can't, we don't, I don't have room. I got 55 feet of right-of-way. I got no room for parking. So, some of the people that live along there, they're gonna be upset, because they got no street parking. But I don't know what else to do. I can't get right-of-way from the railroad. They won't give it to us. So, the council may not accept this, but I don't know, I don't know how we're gonna do it, you know? I honestly don't know how we're gonna do it. And there may be just creative designs, but I've got right-of-way of eighty, eighty, of 55 feet that I'm trying to squeeze, you know, all these components, and allow vehicular traffic, commercial traffic, because Patterson Road, they use, use it for commercial traffic quite a bit, you know, to be able to allow goods and services to go east and west. So, anyway, so engaging the public and coming up with a long-term plan, we're not gonna build it tomorrow. It's gonna take a long time to, you know, accumulate the money to build it, but at least we have a, a strategy, and we have a plan line that council has considered that we can move forward on. So, that's what that's all about.
All right. Number eight, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move, will you adjourn?
The Tuesday, March 17th, 2005, meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Riverbank has been adjourned. Thank you.